So Islam, 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 we are here, we are here, we are here for thirty minutes more or less. Um, this is our Sabbath study session, alright? Uh, where during the forty days of gifting by Mercy Charities, Khalifa Media and a bunch of other people, we gather funds for Moorish initiatives. Uh, we, I guess, celebrate Moorish culture, right? And now we're coming through with a giving back to the community through knowledge. You know, sharing what, what we've applied and seen success with, you know, giving back, right? For the forty days of gifting that leads up to our Prophet's Born Day, which is this upcoming Monday, yay! Uh, yeah, so I'm just gonna hop right in because I have a full day planned myself. Uh, and this will have graphics and everything else included when I upload it to YouTube. So today, I got another question from a good sister asking, um, Islam. Asking, okay, so we spoke about, someone asked me how they should set up their business as a Moor last week, and we went in on that. And then invited folks to, you know, if you needed some more detail or whatever, hit me up at Islam@KhalifaMedia.com and I'll see what I can, what I can do. So good sister hit me up and she asked the question, I'm gonna bring the question up for y'all. Okay, so she says, "Islam, I am so glad I caught you on the IG live during business, discussing business filing. I'm a homeschooling mom from the Maryland Republic. Maryland school, homeschool so-called law states that only parents and guardians are responsible for homeschooling their children. However, tutors are allowed to assist with instruction," she's paraphrasing. "I would like to start an in-home, uh, homeschool tutorial, where a small group of children, similar to what micro school, will come two to three times a week and would work with the group of children covering basic classes and offering quote-unquote electives too." Um, "I have been homeschooling over eleven years and have been wanting to do this. I need guidance, how to properly file an education business with the IRS, and all, any suggestions would be appreciated, alright? And I am going to read my response to her, right? Because I responded to her and was like, oh wait, this would make a great, uh, class to share with everybody. Because this might come up again, so why not put it in one space, spot where people can access it? So I responded, peace! "I would definitely, uh, definitely suggest you set up a religious corporation. Then use that corporation to start your school. That religious part stops state regulations at the door. Add in the protections as an indigenous on this land and it's a wrap. You don't have to be linked with an MSTA, but it would definitely help. You can mention in your articles or incorporation that your business structure is such that the school is set up to be acquired by an MSTA when the opportunity presents itself." I'm gonna tell y'all why, why I did that. Um, because I'm not telling her to do anything I haven't already done, I don't like that stuff. Because I actually went through, let me finish the letter first. Okay, there are groups of Mormons, yeah, so that's the part, my advice, and here's the example. There are groups of Mormons and the Church of Scientology that basically, that are basically enslaving their sons. They set up religious schools and send the boys out to build for real homes and office buildings with all the money going to their church. They call it apprenticeship, even though it's obviously slavery. And the state can't say boo because it will violate their so-called religious practices, okay? Hope that helps, let me know if you have any other questions, alright? And then I got off the phone with, or finished this, and I'm like, man, this would make a great discussion, right? So a little background, um, like I said, I'm not advising anybody on anything I haven't personally done because I know how that looks in my eyes. You know, oh, let me give you some advice on how to set up a business, even though, you know, all I did was set it up, I've never actually run a business and actually turned a profit on a business. There's a difference, like, oh, I know how to file my LLCs. Do you know how to, like, open a bank account? Um, do you know how to do all the, the, uh, state filings where you don't have, you know, you just gotta report, like, let them know you're still in business, but you don't have to file taxes and all that stuff, you know how to do that? So that's what I'm doing, because I've actually done it, um, and let me see, how old is Khalifa Media? Damn, Khalifa Media will be ten years old this year, so yeah, I've been doing this for a minute. And from Khalifa Media, I was able to open up a whole bunch of other stuff and different forms of stuff. So here I am giving back, right? So, background on why I know how to do this with homeschooling. Back in two thousand, ah, I wanna say ten, right? I was homeschooling, I found out about the Moors, you know, I was already raised Nation of Islam, so I already had a problem with this society. And then I'm like, oh, okay, there's that last missing piece, I'm not black, right? So I immediately yanked my children out of school because I didn't like them being up in, we were in Georgia, right? I didn't, I didn't like the whole vibe, because we were in a small town in Georgia and it was obvious what was going on. Um, as far as, I guess, race-wise, even though, you know, there's supposed to be only one race, the human race, but a certain group of people saying that there's different races, so I'mma, I'mma go, I'mma roll with them. Like, okay, I'm human, I don't know what you calling yourself, but sure, I'm a racist too, right? But anyway, so I pulled them out of school because I'm like, I have a degree in education. I love, I have a degree in education because I love teaching, I can do this better myself. Because I tell parents, um, who are on the fence with homeschooling, and this ain't about homeschooling, it's like the business part. But if you're on the fence about homeschooling, just remember, if you taught your, if you potty trained your child, you taught them the hardest lesson they've learned today. To potty train a, to teach a two-year-old to do anything consistently and accurately as best as a two-year-old can do. You can teach them how to read, trust me. You can teach them how to write, you can teach them how to add, all that stuff. And then the little side discussions, next thing you know, you getting compliments like, you're only seven? Wow, it's like talking to an adult, that's what, that's what I deal with with my children, right? But anyway, back to the business part. So I was homeschooling, right? And working a full-time job because I had help. And, um, I eventually quit the job because I wanted to do my, do it myself. And, um, I was in Georgia at the time and hadn't done my homework, right? I had done enough of my homework, I was so focused on the UN part, this is before I knew the UN stuff was like unenforceable. But anyway, uh, so I'm like, yeah, I should be straight, you know? Because the UN drip says we, indigenous people are allowed, or, uh, have the right, not the, that allowed, we have the right to educate our children in any form or fashion we please. And, um, we don't have to notify anybody, right? Except that part, it's not enforceable because it's the UN, right? It's just all, um, lip service. Um, so next thing I know, some family members of my, a family member of mine gets caught up in some stuff, lies on me and says that I'm involved, right? And I tell the cops show up and I tell, actually the sheriff, sheriff, they want no cops there. The sheriff shows up, tell him, we need to talk to you about this, I'm like, come back with a warrant till then, kick rocks. So they dug into my stuff and, uh, found out that I was homeschooling my daughter who was like in second grade. And then I hadn't registered with the state, so they went to court and, uh, didn't summon me or not, actually, yes, they did. Tell them, um, you didn't ask us permission to homeschool your child. I'm like, what, okay, I'm gonna send my grand sheik up there to, uh, make a special appearance on my behalf to tell y'all to go, to kiss my ass frankly. And I'm gonna give you, he gonna read off all the reasons why, because I'm not gonna grace you with my presence, right? So, uh, he tries to go up there for me and they won't let him in the courtroom, alright? Even though he had, he's like, I'm coming in as a minister, I'm coming in as a representative because she, she can't make it. She already, she already filed a notice or a special appearance letting y'all know that she was gonna be doing this, it's in the case file, in case y'all try some slick stuff. They still wouldn't let him in, they issued a bench warrant for my arrest and came and get me a couple of hours later, right? Spent three days in the tomb, thank goodness I just read the Quran before this happened, so I was good, right? And, uh, they told me I was gonna be there for thirty days, I'm like, yeah, I'll be out Monday, right? Because this was on a Friday, I'm like, I know how this work, I'll be out Monday, right? If anything, I'm gonna get a three-day vacation, right? Um, so I get to court on that Monday, my grand sheik is behind me. Um, some, the family member that caused the problem came all the way down there that was behind me. Because they were actually after her, they went after me, they just, they, they, they actually admitted, they arrested me to get her to come down there. But what they were looking for, she didn't have it with her, so it was a waste of time. Everybody got, it was straight except me, but anyway. So we in the courtroom and it's like all these people, like, why, why is this courtroom so packed, right? And I'm thinking it must be like a bunch of cases being heard that day. And, um, so, who was it? The prosecutor gets up, tell them, yeah, we moving, she didn't show up for court to ask us permission to educate her own child, I didn't have to show up because I had already filed a notice of special appearance. And so we issued a bench warrant and had her picked up and put in a cage. Uh, so now we moving to have her children permanently removed from her house, home, and terminate her parental rights. I just looked at them and just thought, I bust out laughing, like, y'all need to do so much more. You need to file an actual petition to, we're here about a warrant for homeschooling. And I know you need to file a petition to terminate parental rights. What are y'all doing? And the judge's face, he's like, uh-oh. I'm like, yeah, and I shouldn't even be here because I sent counsel. I read y'all statutes before, uh, all this happened, and praise Allah, this is what I'm saying. Praise Allah, I read my Quran, I read all my statutes and I talked to my grand sheik. And, um, we discussed what, what your statute said, what everybody, Georgia statute says, everyone has a right to counsel. It does not say you have a right to an attorney. Because they think, that's what happened, they said, yeah, you sent your grand sheik, you were supposed to send an attorney. Like, no, I sent counsel because Georgia statute says I have a right to counsel, I looked it up. Ends Georgia statute and it said counsel is not synonymous with attorney. The judge, you know, you know those pink people with the blood rushes to their face and it's kinda gross how you see it, right? So he's just like, uh, turns around to the relative, like, you live in Park Forest, right? Uh, so what's it like up there, blah, 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 trying to make small talk with the people behind me? I'm like, hello, I'm sitting here for not asking you permission to educate my own child, and I'm sitting here in, in handcuffs and leg irons? Because I'm, I'm a homeschooler, really? And this is, this is when I first stopped eating meat, I don't know what you know, if you know what the human body goes through when you stop eating meat, you turn into, you look like a straight-up crackhead. So, uh, because your body detox and getting all that stuff out of you, right? I'm fine now, I'm nice and plump now, you know, but whatever. But I was quite, I was quite a rail, I was really thin. So it was a bad look, like, you got this skinny scrawny woman up in here in leg irons and handcuffs because she was trying to educate her own children, yeah, this ain't a good look. And it turns out that she did try to come up here and y'all like, wouldn't let her counsel in to, to represent her? Okay, this ain't good. And then I'm like, um, he was like, uh, what, what happened? Um, they kept, what, it was something, and he did it three times, I can't, this was like ten years ago. And I'm getting to the business part again, but anyway, long story short, um, I basically rattled off, uh, Georgia statute, a verse from the Quran, a verse from the Moorish Science Temple, um, constitution, and, um, U-Drip. You know, UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People where it said, yeah, I had a right to, uh, oh, check it out, I forgot about this part. I had a right to, as an indigenous person, I proclaimed my nationality already, I had a right to educate my child however I want, right? And, um, just as an FYI, this is in 2010, Obama just, I let them know, Obama just signed on to that thing two years ago, so, you know, I'm gonna see what I can do to buy, to get y'all sued in, um, international court, you know, just running my mouth. And the judge is like, alright, we, we done here, we're done, get her up out of here, here come the sheriff that arrested me, but I got some more warrants, I've been sitting in jail for three days, what more warrants do you have on me, right? Judge quote, "Sit down, shut up, we're done." Right? Because I came in there, I, I just presented their own stuff to them, I didn't interpret anything, I can't stand when people interpret law. Apply it, right? Don't be these Europeans trying to like, ugh, it's just like, it makes my skin crawl, it's like, be sincere. It's written very well because these people are not very clever, they're just calculating, right? So you can actually just slap them with their own hand and it'll, it'll work just fine. So, um, they, they like, okay, judge, like, get her out, out of here. Uh, they take me back to the courthouse and, um, asked me, do I wanna meet with my counsel? Do what? Sure, let me meet with counsel, meet with this old cracker, I'mma call, because it's Georgia, they like being called crackers down there. Anyway, uh, and he's like, okay, so let's discuss your case. I'm like, I just got back from court and they releasing me right now, huh? They just gave me this case, well, that's your problem, I was gonna release you anyway because I don't need you to return me over to the court, I know who you are, right? He had a look on his face, he like, you got yourself out, I sure did, you can go somewhere, right? And so I'm going back to my, uh, my cage and like, okay, I know how this work, I'm from Chicago, I've seen plenty of people arrested, I should be out about, it's like twelve noon now, I should be out about three o'clock in the morning. Nope, they like, oh, they saying, so they, they put me back after I put the, or talked to the attorney. And here come the, uh, jailer, tell them, uh, collect your stuff, you're leaving right now. Huh? Okay. And when I say these people were rushing me, like, the chick was like, stepping on my heels trying to make me walk faster? Yeah, they wanted me out and gone. So I get dressed and, um, I see the, they giving me my stuff back and I'm, 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 the lady who has to give me my stuff back is the same one that told me I was gonna be there for thirty days. I didn't say nothing too, I just looked at her and smiled, like, yeah, thirty days, huh? Yeah, anyway, and so then I'm like, okay, let me give my, give my people a call, come pick me up. And, um, sitting there in the seat and they tell me I can't wait in the building. They kicked me out the jailhouse, so yeah, that's what happens when you know who you are, you know who they are, and you know how to deal with them accordingly, quote, uh, Taj Shere Bay, right? All it takes is knowing who you are. Um, yeah, and I need to get into that, that part, the know who you are, be yourself part, and how that affects our children. Because people think, um, oh, we, Moors must be, this is aside, Moors must be doing something special with their children because their children are brilliant. I'm finding, my theory is, it's just the lack of the shame of being called black frees their minds up so they can actually be this, as talented as they truly are. That's in my experience, I'm not doing anything special. And, um, my son is, uh, in high school, a junior in high school, he's about to, um, he's an AP, whatever AP he's not in, he's in the honors version of it, right? And he keeps saying, I don't understand what I'm doing, but I'm getting all A's. Fine, just keep getting all A's, whatever, and I keep getting contacted by his teachers. And then I'm not even gonna start with my, my daughter who's in college, right? Um, whatever, so yeah, that's like another discussion, how just not calling your children black affects their minds. So, why are we actually here? So after all that happened, right? Um, I just left Georgia, went and back to Chicago. And I'm like, yeah, I'm not, that was a nice lesson learned, you know, let me, you know how you make a mistake and you know what not to do? You didn't, it's like, oh, I didn't even know that was there type of thing, so now I know what not to do, so let me share that with y'all so you can benefit from my mistakes or my, my lessons, right? Or increases, I don't like lessons, I like increase. But I guess it could be lessening because you lessening your ignorance, right? So, after that delightful experience, right? And, uh, oh yeah, but never mind, I'm not gonna go into that, I was like, yeah, never again. So let me set myself up so, um, I won't have to deal with this anymore. So, um, I'm traveling the world, traveling the world, and I'm not staying anywhere long enough to have to do anything as far as notifying about homeschooling until I, I moved to Indiana, and I'm like, yeah, I might be here for a while, so let me just get set up. So I look up their homeschooling laws, thank goodness it's Indiana, so they're real lax, they're just like, yeah, just let us know, right? And, um, they actually have a form for it, so you might wanna look that up and, I'm not gonna go into the homeschooling part because I'm getting off into a tangent, this is the business part. It was inspired by the homeschooling part, okay? Where I'm just like, I'm not gonna be, I'm not dealing with y'all and I'mma, I'mma close up all these, stuff up all these rat holes so y'all can't keep bothering me, right? So, um, like I mentioned last week, the first thing I did, I wanted to set up a school so I wouldn't have no problems, and because you have access to resources if you're set up as an actual legit school. Like Target is a real good provider of school supplies, but you gotta be set up as a nonprofit or a school, right? So here's how I did, I didn't set up a school, I'm saying you can use this, my process to set up a school, okay? Or whatever you wanna do. The only issue with this is it has, these businesses that I'm talking about, you actually have to be helping our people. I should have probably mentioned that, right? You can't be out here trying to be like, I want a Lambo and a house in Miami, that's not what this is about, right? Uh, if you get that, bonus, but that, you can't make that your objective, or I, I promise you it ain't gonna work, right? And I'll get into why, there's a reason why it won't work. Um, but the main reason why this needs to be something that you can justify saying, no, I'm not, I'm not doing this for profit, I'm doing this to help my, my people. Which we're supposed to be doing right now anyway, we're supposed to be getting our nation back in, um, order so we can get these invaders and colonists and opportunists up off our land, all of them, right? Uh, we need to get ourselves straight. So, um, the first forms of businesses should be, in my opinion, should be geared toward nation building, alright? So I'm setting up this corporation to avoid these colonists, but it's a corporation that's selling books, Moorish, Moorish books about, uh, about our people, written by our people, directed to our people, right? And thank goodness it's set up where that's, that's a form of, form of business where you really can't tax it because it's, uh, it's educational, right? And it's religious. Basically, everything that we do, you should, everything we do, at least everything I do, it ties back to the religious part, right? Because we are a periclean nation, we're a theocratic government, so it should tie back to, uh, the religion somehow. And it's amazing the protections religion provides everyone on this land, right? But just because you have that indigenous part, you get an extra bonus boost where they can do even less to you. And I'm in the, and right now, my next mode is like, okay, I've kinda, I'm, I'm good with this to the point where it's like second nature, let me move on to this part to see what this Moorish thing can actually get me. I wasn't using this to do that at first, but now I'm like, okay, this is good, it's running on its own, let me see what I, I can actually acquire, that kinda thing. Like, okay, I'm, um, I'm, I'm getting ready to start applying for grants and all that stuff through Mercy Charities. Let's see what, okay, everybody's applying for this grant, let's see if adding more to it has a, you know, added benefit to it. I'mma find out, I don't know yet, but I'll, I'll, I'll find out and let y'all know, so you can do it too, right? Because these people are, the prophets' prophecies are prophething all over the place, they, they coming true in my, my, my world, right? So it says the European is helping us. What are we doing, are we, are we actually letting them know how to help us? We can't just sit there expecting folks to like bang down, knock down the doors and hand us a check. You gotta set yourself up properly and be ready to receive that, right? So here's my effort to help y'all get this going. I could set up a course, I could sell packages, that takes too long, I'm ready to get this stuff over with, right? I know nobody appreciates a free lunch, but whatever. My chart actually says what, uh, my Vedic chart, it actually says, um, there's a part of it where whatever I do for a living, I have to give it away or it's going to be taken away from me bigger than what I should, I could have just chosen to give away, right? So even though you could have charged for it, so here you go. So anyway, I get to Indiana, right? Um, not only do I wanna protect my children and myself from this whole homeschooling thing, I also want to protect my business interests because I am not going to be engaging in commerce to give a portion of it to Rome. I can't, I just can't, it's just the principle of the thing. So, as I mentioned last week, I got, um, in touch with my daughter's father and said, let me use your information to set up, um, an unincorporated association. Uh, I think, this was like seven years ago, so I think I set up the unincorporated association because I was following the path of the prophet. How he had the Moorish Holy Temple of Science and then they incorporated later. The Holy Temple of Science was an unincorporated civic association, alright, and religious. So, um, I'm like, yeah, let me just follow that, even though I could have just gone straight to incorporation, which you can go straight to court incorporation. Um, but anyway, so these are my articles of association, right? And, um, I'll make them available for you if you ask for them, just email me at Islam@KhalifaMedia.com. Like, here go my articles of association and, uh, I'mma read them out to you. Please use this, alright? Because, um, I like consistency, right? I like the thought of no matter where a Moor is, when they're dealing with a European or a colonist, any colonist, because that's, not, they're not just these pale Europeans, all these people that's not supposed to be here. Um, I want them to be able to look at that paperwork and be like, oh, I've seen this before and I remember how it worked, alright? So please take this, use it, because it worked, try test it, yeah, right? Um, so my, the article of associations, which we later on down the line, use these same articles to set up the, uh, actual corporation itself, right? So I'mma read through these, actually, no, before I read through the articles of association, keep forgetting. Um, I have a bad habit of presuming, right? Like, oh, well, I know that, so everybody must know it, that's not cool, alright? So, um, I'm gonna give y'all a couple of definitions, so when I'm reading through this, you don't have to be like, what does that mean, or, or what does she mean by that? Because I have my definition of it, so I'm just gonna go through it, alright? So, this is, um, my process, is how I consecrate it, I guess? Consecrate it, the, um, my business as best as I could because I don't have access to a temple, I didn't have an access, access to a temple where I was when I did this, right? So, I'm like, I'm about to consecrate this, so they can't touch it. I got the idea from the Mormons, you know, I got it back from the Mormons, how about that? I got it back from them, alright? Um, so, first definition, consecrate. Oh, and I'm reading from my Blacks Law Dictionary fourth edition, alright? Consecrate, an ecclesiastical law, to dedicate to sacred purposes as a bishop by imposition of hands or a church or churchyard by prayers. Consecration is performed by a bishop or archbishop. Okay, let me look up bishop, which is so funny, I grew up on Bishop Street when I was a child, so cool. Okay, so bishop, in English law, the ecclesiast, the ecclesiastical dignitary being the chief of the clergy within his diocese, subject to the archbishop of the province in which his diocese is situated. Most of the bishops are also members of the House of Lords. Now how did I apply this, right? I'm not gonna interpret it, I'm gonna apply it to my, my situation, if you wanna stay as interpretation, fine, do that. So I'm like, okay, bishop is, um, an ecclesiastical dignitary, okay, we're gonna make that a, uh, Islamism. Uh, uh, we can still keep it ecclesiastic, I guess, alright? So, uh, a dignitary being the chief clergy within its diocese, okay? So equating that or generalizing that to the Moors, that would mean I was, I would be like, like the chief or maybe the sheik in my province, or we need to come up with a name for our stuff, right? And make it a list and distribute. So we know what our, um, our leaders are called, what are the, the spots that they lead call? Like a chief had a chiefdom, right? Does a sheik have a sheikdom? I'm gonna go with sheikdom, alright? So anyway, so there's no sheik around me. Um, and Noah Drew Ali basically said, come to him to be approved, because I see why he did that. He said, come to him to get these charters and stuff, I see why he did that, because I guess he knew we were, we was gonna have to like plant a flag ourselves, right? So, um, like, okay, I'm the only Moor in my area, I'll point me, right? And, um, because this is my so-called diocese, I'mma call it my sheikdom, right? So I'mma point myself because I am actually doing the work of the prophet and if I do it right, it's gonna eventually, uh, be belong to the temple anyway, and I'll get into why I just said that. So that's bishop. So, uh, ecclesiastical, uh, dignitary. And usually a house, a member of the House of Lords, well, we know we nobles, good, check. So next thing I looked up was ecclesiastic, see how I'm like building on it? Assume nothing, so ecclesiastics, ecclesiastes, ecclesiastes, okay, ecclesiastical, okay? Ecclesiastical pertaining to anything, um, belonging to or set apart for the church as distinguished from civil or secular with regard to the world, and it says work. Okay, now let's look, last definition, I think, what is a church? I'm assuming nothing, because, uh, the IRS, dealing with them a lot to avoid dealing with them? It's so funny, I, I educate myself on you so I can avoid you. And, um, when you fill out their paperwork, they say, if you're a nonprofit or a religious organization, are you a church or other religious organization? I'm just like, nah. So what I'm hearing is that churches aren't religious organizations in a traditional sense. Everything else is, right? Because y'all setting churches apart, but I'mma look up what the definition of church is, just so I'm not assuming anything. So, uh, um, I'm consecrating this by making, by dedicating it to my, uh, religious practice, right? And the only ones that can do that are bishops. A bishop is a dignitary of a religious order and the head of that diocese or that, uh, that group of, uh, congregants in that area, and is usually a noble, okay? And then, uh, ecclesiastical is something that is set apart for the use of the church. And now we're looking at church, church. In its most general sense, the religious society founded and established by Jesus Christ to receive, preserve and propagate His doctrines and ordinances. That sound like the MSTA, right? Because it's, I always found it hilarious that the, the people that come, that crucified Jesus, went on to set up a religion in His name. And then they, they kept him nailed to the wall and were cannibalizing him for two thousand years, drinking his blood. But anyway, uh, I know if they don't speak radical about the church, I'm not speaking radical, that's what they, what they doing, right? It's a two-thousand-year-old corpse nailed to the wall and you're cannibalizing him, right? I don't think that's what he brought his message for. So church, in the most general sense, the religious society founded and established by Jesus Christ to receive, preserve and propagate His doctrines and ordinances. Is that not the Moorish Science Temple, right? To receive, we, we're propagating His ordinances, oh, you gotta be kidding me? The Catholic Church, right, and its daughters, all these, the twenty thousand denominations, right? They're all Catholics. Those people are not, no, no, I don't not speak radical, I'm trying to hold my tongue, but no. I, I, I claim that for the Moors, because we, we, we doing it way better than they are. So now that we got those definitions out the way, I'm, um, share with y'all what I actually filed as my, um, articles to get them off my back and leave me alone, and, uh, they worked. So articles of association, read through them real quick, as you can see, they're not long. Brevity, eloquence and brevity, if you gotta be, uh, Brevity, eloquence and brevity. If you gotta be, uh, rambling on, you don't know what you're talking about. Keep it short, keep it sweet, right? If they got questions, they're asking, but I try to write stuff where it's like, no, I'mma let you know before you ask. So, alright, articles of association. Article one, the name of, no, name of the organization. The name of this association is Morris Religious and Cultural Institute, henceforth Mercy. Mercy is designed, wait, mercy is designated, let me zoom in, cause I can barely see this. Uh, can't believe I'm up there doing this. I'm like, just woke up. Okay. Uh, let's see. Mercy is designated an unincorporated nonprofit association created. Under the constitution and bylaws of the Morris Science Temple of America and the state slash Commonwealth of Indiana. Article two, intent and purpose. It is the intent of the Morris Religious and Cultural Institute, Mercy, an affiliate of, this was before we, we became an auxiliary. An affiliate of the Morris Science Temple of America, MSTA, to be subject to the general supervision of the MSTA. Mercy consists of five or more members joined by mutual consent. For the common nonprofit purposes of educating and rendering assistance to fellow members. Providing an accessible source of information pertaining to Morris science, religion and culture to members and the public. Recording and maintaining the culture of the MST of A in the Americas. Wait, and recording and maintaining the culture of the MST of A in the Americas. Mercy may engage in any and all of, all other charitable activities permitted to a religious organization exempt from federal income tax. Or corresponding future provisions of the federal tax law. To these ends. Mercy may do and engage in any and all lawful activities that may be incidental or reasonably necessary. To any of these purposes and it shall have and may exercise all other powers and authority now or hereafter conferred upon. Unincorporated nonprofit associations in the state slash Commonwealth of Indiana. Yes, I wrote all of this, cause I speak legalese. Um, yes, this is on separate language. This provision is extended to any future subsidiaries formed and located in other states, commonwealths, provinces and prefectures. See how I set it up so anybody can use it? Alright, cause I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in a. I have Mars and Aries, so patience is not a strong suit of mine. But I have Saturn in the tenth house, so I'm, I'm like karmically required to work on it, right? I can't be pushy. I can't insist though, right? So, article three, office and duration. One, the office of mercy shall be located at the address at which the secretary treasurer or alternate title has official residence. Home office. I'm following the steps of the prophet. He, he brought us everything and told us to use it, alright? So home office or as such place as directors may from time to time determine or as the business of mercy may require. See how I left all that wiggle room? The duration, number two, the dur- duration of mercy shall be perpetual because our stuff is set up as a generation skipping trust. Everything's, everything is, um, supposed to be geared towards these children, right? Uh, but let's say, let's see, writing things like this made me ins- in. Okay, swear I need this artillery fire damage. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, let's see. Uh, let's see, number three. The death, removal or resignation of any member of mercy shall not result in the dissolution of mercy, okay? Article four, structure and membership. Uh, mercy consists of individuals and groups dedicated to the promotion and advancement of uplifting of fallen humanity and related arts and sciences. Through, and this part is where you can insert what you're doing. Use that exact sentence with your business name and then you can insert what you're doing. So mercy for your business consists of individuals or groups dedicated to the promotion and advancement of the uplifting of fallen humanity. And related arts slash sciences through your business, but mine says public education, training and skills development, alright? Um, membership is open to anyone desiring to render support, guidance and encouragement to individuals wishing, wishing to learn. Or enhance self, enhance self, eh, in this divine, in this divine that you be in, in this divine and national movement. Mercy is a purely voluntary organization, so you can't tax me. Even though, you know, if it's making money and the, the, the business is paying rent to be a business and the rent happens to be for a house, I can't leave it empty. So I might as well live here. So anyway, um, yeah. They do it and they doing it like for scummy reasons, like buying, I don't want no yacht. I don't want a mansion. That's, that seems like a lot to take care of, you know? I just want my little, my little house with a plot in the back, you know, coming soon. Anyway, um. It's a purely voluntary organization. Membership in mercy becomes effective upon either one. Uh, the obtainment of entry into a mercy system, I set this up so everybody can use this. Two, proof of membership in the MSTA, set it up so we can all use it. And three, gift, gift as donation to mercy. So I guess you get gift to get in. Mercy does not discriminate on the basis of sex, age, religious affiliation, handicap, national origin. Or other personal factor. I did not put race in there because there is only one race, the human race. So if you're calling yours, if you say, you know, there's other races, then you're admitting that you're not human. Um, and I'mma leave that credit to the people who came up with that nonsense. Let's see, cause I think it's a confession. Article five, association leadership, and I'm almost done. Um, the mercy shall initially, initially be governed by at least two members to be appointed as directors. The names, the name and total number of positions will be determined as the group requires. Changeable as circumstances necessitate, one person will be designated as mercy's agent in this state slash Commonwealth as needed. Following state law requirements. Um, why I keep saying group, alright? Again, this is modeled to get them off my back. It's modeled after, um, the MSTA. Our bylaws are the MST's bylaws. It's real, the prophet gave us everything. We just gotta use it, right? So, um. In that, like, we, in that respect, your business is gonna have to have members somehow, even if it's like, okay, um. And it, and of course, this is like, if you set up an LLC, LLC is supposed to have members, um, not supposed to, but it's, it's good if they do. And I'll, I'll get into that later. But anyway, um, if you want. To say like, okay, I'm adhering to the, the bylaws and the structure of the MSTA, you're gonna have to have people on board with you. That shouldn't be a problem. So because we're supposed to be nation building, not doing stuff as an individual. You can work alone, but you gotta like build, you gotta set your stuff up in, um, cooperation with somebody else, preferably another Moor, right? Does not have to be a Moor, because you know, this is for Moors and Muslims. In fact, when I incorporated this thing, it was not a Moor who helped me incorporate it. There's a Muslim on the incorporation papers, alright? Um, yeah, if he's listening, yeah, you like, uh, more sincere than most of the Moors I've met, alright? Uh, let's see. Article five, yes, article five. No, article six, I'm sorry. The fiscal year of mercy shall be January first through December first of each year. All minute books, all minute books, correspondence and other records of mercy shall be preserved, preserved by the director's secretary. Records that have ceased to be of use for the conduct of the affairs of mercy may be turned over for preservation. To a depository designated by it or discarded. So basically I can do with my paperwork what I feel like. Um, okay, article seven. There's only seven articles. In the event of the dissolution of mercy is property, and this is just boilerplate for, um, that you're supposed to put in for like all nonprofits. Any event of the dissolution of mercy, its property, funds and other assets shall be transferred. To whatever organization or organizations operate exclusively for charitable, educational and or scientific purposes. As directors may desert determine, provided such organization or organizations qualify as tax exempt under the law statutes of the United States of America. In witness near, uh, in witness whereof, the undersigned have executed these articles of association on this blank day of blank, 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 blank. A test. Oh, okay, I changed this. My fault. Yeah, this is all my fault. My daughter, as soon as she turned 18, I put her on the article, yeah. I'm starting to realize why, uh, why these, uh, why people are so obsessed with having stuff run through their families. I'm starting to really, yeah, you need to start educating your children. Just start talking to them about this stuff. Because, um, my seven year old is helping with this stuff, alright? Because she knows what a, a trust is and what the structure is. So she can help me with this stuff now. Cause it's not hard and our children are geniuses, if you haven't noticed. So, that being said, I think that's everything. Um, yeah. I covered the background on how I ended up with this thing, um, how it's connected to the Morris Science Temple. And I think the articles of incorporation actually have up in it that is set up. Like in the event that I do have access, we, or we, because it's a membership thing. And when we do have access to a temple, because of the structure, it's already, um, set up to be. Incor- uh, absorbed, incorporated into a temple. So if you get, if somebody, what, get froggy, you know, if that's it, if you get froggy, jump. If somebody get froggy and looking at your stuff and trying to, you know, highway rob you, you'll be able to be like, okay, uh, if you wanna mess with me. This is, I need to find the temple real quick and just put this under them. And they'll let you do it. And if they don't, set up your own temple, which you can do. Um, what is it? Is the, uh, the prophet said, uh, come to him to get a charter. And I'm, I'm seeing why I did that, because our people have kingly aspirations. Alright, it's kinda messed up. So, yeah, but if you need some assistance with that, you know, even though it shouldn't be an issue, it's one of those things, like, it's, it's kinda overkill at that point. Cause I've never had to deal with it, right? Whereas like, if you just set yourself up well enough in the first place, you won't have to deal with anything going forward, right? Set a good foundation type of thing. And again, if you want all of my resources, um, just hit me up at Islam@kalifamedia.com or info@kalifamedia.com. And I will make it available for you. If you have any questions, please hit me up. Um, yeah, other than that, unless somebody got something else about the business, next week I'll probably be going back into the lawsuit part. So in case somebody tries to mess with your business, you can sue them, right? And with that, I'm done. Y'all have a wonderful rest of your day. Um, happy, uh, Prophet's Day, which is Monday. Um, and with that, I guess I'll see y'all next week, right? On our Saturday study sessions. Y'all have a great day and I'll check y'all later. Islam, be cool and bye-bye, y'all.